If that thing picks up. Very sensitive. Yeah, that's your six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. We will call. You're Tomford here.
He's running here.
Mike Nellin present.
Go on.
Present.
From here, staff and then then I'm calling.
Present.
Stand for Ted Williams.
To do the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go from get Laura Weaver connections department report. What?
Um. Late, so not doing a perfect report, like so. So really, we're just going over that I C S proposal, right? Cause uh. I do.
Then for for clarification, um, we just had a report in the last regular council meeting. The next one will be, uh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so um, ours is just the I C S and the information was sent and you shouldn't have it. This is just a proposal, professional service agreement with I C S. It's just basically to go ahead and see um what the cost would be a preliminary. Um blueprint because there they would have an architect. Uh, so in order to do that, to see um, we kind of have to do something. Um, if we do decide to go forward with the project, the the eighty five hundred dollars would go into. The current project, but if we didn't decide to move forward. We wouldn't be reimbursed at eighty five hundred dollars in the project. Um, but this is the only way to find out what it would cost and if we want to even move forward with it. We did that market study for forty five hundred dollars already. So this would be just like that next step contact and they have a. They they have the architect under them, so if we did move forward with them, it would be one point of contact for that.
To listen to your recommendation then to go.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the people that the ones that were at the board meeting and they did present it. Um, as well, and that was a recommendation one as well to to look at um. To yeah, to go with them. We had to uh one another company that was not not a local company. I mean, I've had a, I mean, I had to have had a good reference from other people for that other company as well. Just um, they're not local and they understood when they, you know, gave it that we might be working with somebody local, but they wanted to put it in there because I've had previous conversation like regarding that, so. Just wanted to, but. Um, the board, the ones that were there and presentation felt it would be a good deal to have somebody, two people that are right in here in the community. To be. Would be, last time, I think that was one of the problems was uh, we did a general contractor, but we did a. Um, an architect and they were both separate and without somebody late. In the community managing it, so they would look to the community to go out for bids because they do not do the construction part of it, so they would, you know. There's still ones in our community that could be um involved in the in in doing construction on it as well.
Yeah, we'd compare with our own sitting and meeting and uh. You know, the feasibility studies in place now that you know exactly what the nuts and bolts and the actual price would be uh. Till we get that number, I mean, we'll just throw in darts at a board, kind of figure out the costs, so. I think it's money well invested.
And we would own the plans.
Well, not necessarily with with permission, they would allow us to uh.
They would be very preliminary, so they would just kind of give us a, they're not going to have a lot of detailed stuff in them. So they're going to be plans that you could really use much going forward. We've had them in the past, we've had like, okay, we've never gone forward to the project because I. Looked at some of the plans that we have there and they're just, but they're just very basic, you know, they're going to give you the outline of the building, how it is. And give you an idea of, yeah, other things that you want to give you an idea what cost will be, but they're not going to be in great detail. They said they wouldn't be detailed.
Yeah, it'll be a general scope of what would entail. So, yeah, it won't be very detailed, but it would give you at least a snapshot of of the dimension. Yeah. The cost per square foot because that can go anywhere from. They say three to three hundred.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And and we didn't know the size, I was just kind of giving estimate what I thought, you know, that would be.
Yeah, ju- just for clarification, so on page five of this proposal. Says phase one planning eighty five hundred dollars like you've mentioned.
Yeah.
And it says this fee is reimbursed if phase two is scored, so it probably technically won't be reimbursed, it'll just be applied.
Probably, likely.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Was out the same, I just was making sure wording was understood.
And and I don't know yet that they would, but making sure like as you're in the project, they're doing billing, so. That would be subtracted from at some point to billing.
Yeah.
I like the idea of some local people involved as far as the management of it, what I know is when I was looking through there. Recognize some names and. Somebody used to be kids.
So is your intent then to reach out to them? Ready to already?
No, I ha- I have not until the council proves it, so I haven't, I haven't. Actually, he kind of wanted to know how it went, if we wanted someone tonight, but I.
So are you looking for a motion to move for to phase two?
I would move to phase one, just just a motion to approve to do the phase one planning eighty five hundred dollars. And the reason is that falls under that twenty five, that any building or anything is under the council for approval, so I. Even to move forward with phase one, I needs to be as everybody as a council on board for.
They're agreeing with board both move forward?
They recommended, I guess.
Then did they give you, maybe it was mentioned, it's pretty me, but if if. We give them the green light to move forward, uh where do we fall in their like job lists, like May, June, like when do you think the next?
Um, so they would play, they would have something for us. Because the goal was always to have a sixtieth anniversary and it was like, oh, it would be nice to have something there to say, hey, this is the next phase. So the good, their goal would be to have something by that, we did set a tentative date for August, so. That does give them a little bit more time because originally I had said June to June or July, so it does give them a little bit more time, but they would pro- they didn't think that would be a problem to have something like that. For that period of time. I mean, they're not, you know, we're not looking at, we're only looking at, yeah, this first drawing phase and cost wise. Uh, even then, at that point. And I don't know if by August, if you want to have a decision and say, yes, we're gonna, we like it, or you know, like, you like it and we're going to move forward in. Building and start that process, I mean, it's a, it's a long process and they talked, you know, there's like. A long process that would it would be to get to that point. Yeah.
I think they're going to have two meetings with.
Yeah. Input of people and staff. A council, uh, but what you know, they'd like to see, I mean, they talked about, you know, I mean, obviously, and I've had that conversation with others as well, I mean. You have to make it cost affordable for your community as well, you know, so. I mean, amenities are nice, but you know, can't put a whole lot in, you know.
So they do a lot of community input on it?
It would be, they said they could have, I think it. They would hold a. Meeting and stakeholder meeting, there's sessions, listing sessions with, you know, key stakeholder groups. For input, um.
And what what is your preliminary thought on, how many rooms are you looking for?
I actually had said twenty apartments, I mean, just to give them an idea. I don't know, I mean, these, the market study said by two thousand and twenty nine, uh, wasn't it that they were, that there would be a need for. One hundred more or a hundred total and we have. Um, thirty seven, so you know, there's a need for like sixty some, but.
Some of those are memory care, like you didn't think you wanted to get.
That we would just do nursing home, um. Yeah, I mean, as I've said before, our our transitional care unit, which seems to be operating well as it is right now as a transitional care. Was uh was built with the idea that it could be a dementia care down the road if it wasn't operating. Very well as a as a short stay. So I mean, it's nice right now, I mean, it's. It stays pretty cool as a short stay, but it is built to could be a dementia care, memory care.
Have you reached out to hours and associates to ask them what the indication would be based on. Current circumstances, what a bond rating would be?
No.
What the rates would be on finance?
I mean, hopefully, you know, we kind of discussed a little bit about that at the. Uh, hopefully, our bond rating would be a little bit higher, um, I mean, we're not looking at right now, we're looking at just this, we're hoping in a year, two years. Uh, the maybe the bond ratings are going to be a little bit higher, I don't know. I mean, we don't know where it's at, but I I don't think they know until you do your.
Well, that's why, that's why I said an indication.
An S and P meeting. And do you know when you have one? You have a schedule.
Typically, I'm here for the audit, they'll uh. You'll have a conversation with the standard divorce people. And they'll indicate why and how you're being rated, so. And we're hoping it's moving in the right direction.
And there is, you know, um, I mean, there is the the. There can be the general obligation bond or there can be revenue bonds as well. I don't, like I said, I don't know if the revenue bond, and I could ask that question, is driven off of the. S and P or the the bond rating for the city, I don't know. If revenue bond is different than a general obligation bond, so the general obligation bond would be a vote, would have to go to a a vote.
Traditionally, the G O revenue will get you your lowest rating because of the general obligation feature, like is it a tax exempt status?
Yeah, but there is a revenue where it's, you don't have to go to the to the public or a vote.
That'll be a higher rate.
Yeah, yeah, it would be. But there. That.
You're looking for a motion, we said destroy the motion to allow G W C administrator to move forward with I C S for phase one on planning for eighty five hundred dollars, is that what you're?
Yes.
Looking for. Are you going to motion to write it for?
So.
Second.
Second, during, any word discretion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post things on. Motion carries five zero, Laura, you can move ahead.
Uh, one question for you, Laura, just curious question, have you gotten any feedback from Department of Commerce Insurance Division on the Humana Insurance issue?
Um, yes, so they, um. So they need the claims and the appeal, but I mean, we had state surveys, so. I've been pretty busy, um, but they they sent a um email back and I need the appeals and all the information for it. And um, there's only so much that they can do because they cannot. Um. What was her answer? Um, there's only so much that they can do as well, I mean, they can, because it's insurance related, um, paid insurance, like paid claims. And appeals claims, there's only just so much they can do with it. Um, so they said because when, oh, that's what it was, it was Medicare. Regarding Medicare, um, there's really only only much they, so much they can do.
Medicare rules.
Yeah. Yeah, so they said all this, he might mean they might might get it and might not even be able to do anything with it as well.
Only uh speaking of Medicare, any feedback from your association as to. What they're anticipating is going to be coming out of Doge and cutbacks and defunding. Cutbacks, uh, any feedback are you getting?
I think I mentioned last time that I have heard that they're not doing anything with Medicare, so no- nothing with Medicare specific cuts, um. There are going to be cuts and the budget hasn't been settled in Minnesota for uh with uh walls, so it has not been settled, so. Um, there are definitely cuts to going to be had with nursing homes, um. Is specifically in the areas of when you had um the licensing, uh, the bed uh licensing. And we were at ninety one beds and we went to sixty five. Um, there is a rate applied to that to give us more money per resident bed. Um, due to that. Cutting beds, when we cut beds, so. Um, they are looking at taking that away, which I mean, if you watch the news or read stuff on it, they're saying, you know, like. Nursing homes in Minnesota was, I mean, it's a large amount of money and I want to quote it because. Matt's here, they quoted in the papers, so it's a, it's a very large amount of money over four years that could affect nursing homes and um. And there's going to be cuts for assisted living and elderly labor, but. I don't know what those are, so, I mean. We don't know until the budget's settled and what they look like, so.
Sure you'll keep us posted as.
I will, as I know them, so. I missed the day at the Capitol because we had state survey, otherwise I was going to go and rally for nursing homes, but I couldn't, thank you.
Very sorry.
Steve Lane.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, so from March sixth to March twenty sixth, we had a hundred and fifty three calls. Um, any questions on any of these calls in my miscellaneous information, I will go over kind of. At the last meeting, I think there are some questions as far as what our activity codes are. Um, for state citations, we had one vaping, um, a bus. Stop arm violation, our administrative citations, we had eight. Can see the mileage there for the vehicles, knock on wood, no issues with the vehicles, everything's back up and running, we're good to go. No issues with transmission since it's been put in either. Uh, just a Siren update, I still have not gotten any feedback on that, positive or negative, dispatch has gotten no calls on it either, so. Um, going back to the explanation of our activity codes, I think at the last meeting, there are some questions as far as what uh special service details are, and I believe the property watches. So um, doing property watches for places in town, that's kind of a service that we do for people, if they're going to be gone on vacation, we have a form they fill out, they let us know that they're going to be gone. And then we check on their residents usually a couple times a day. And we have contact information, anybody, if we have questions or whatever, we need to get ahold of them. The special service details, that's anything kind of extra, um, I usually go into the school every day if time allows. Or say we have an area in town that we have complaints on speeding, stop signs, stuff like that. Um, if somebody files a complaint, if myself or one of the officers are assigned to an area out there, I have them document that they are there, so. If they want to come in and say that we didn't sit there, we have proof that shows that we had sat there in that area from. This time to this time and kind of what the activity was, just so we have it documented.
Is that also where where you would put, say, stopping traffic for a funeral?
Um, no, that's usually traffic control. Yep. So it's kind of anything extra that we do, extra events, stuff like that. Um.
That was traffic control.
So we do traffic control in the morning and after school.
School.
Correct. Yep, in the mornings and evening time. Um, police department, myself in particular, and some other law enforcement, I'm trying to get wrangled up for this polar plunge coming up through the school on. April eighth. At one o'clock, just so you guys know, Keith and I. Some from the sheriff's office, Sabika P D will be jumping into cold water, we're crazy.
It'll wake me up.
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't like cold, but yes, the kids peer pressured me into jumping in uniform and I said, yes. Um, we've been keeping up on our mandatory training, as you know, every year we have a ton of training to get done, the last two weeks we wrapped up our E M R, but uh, Wadena P D is gracious enough to allow us to join them in training too, so we don't have to pay extra money to go places to get our training done. So we joined in with them last month and then we have more training with them coming up at the end of this month, it's, they're going to set something every month, so we don't cram it all into just a couple days because it gets to be too much. Uh, speaking of Wadena P D, Chief Plouts asked me to take over the regional rep for um, region five chiefs. So I agreed to do that last week, so I will be the representative for Wadena, Todd, Morrison, Cass and Crowing Counties for the chiefs in the area. Um. It involves Zoom meetings every couple weeks, it's nothing that's going to take away from my duties here, obviously. But um, she's been doing it for years and I agreed to take it over for her.
Congratulations.
Thank you, baptism by fire, I'll learn as we go. Um, just kind of a a couple things I wanted to add on here that happened after I did my council report, just kind of a shout out to Joe Wade, we have an, we had an overdose in town last week. Last Thursday night and thankfully, we had a trooper close, a deputy close and Joe was on and the individual. Was saved and talking by the time he got on the ambulance, it was. Great, so. Narcan, yep, Narcan CPR right away, he got up talking about his chest hurting, so. It was a. Good ending. Um, hooked on fishing has now also been thrown on my plate. Julia Kicker came in last week and asked me to take it over since Dave is no longer doing the fire chief. Gig, so I have. The fire department to help me out with that because I think. I don't know, there's probably not a ton that goes into it, but once I figure out as far as what we need to do, it's the fourth graders and monographer, anybody that's not familiar with it. I didn't want to see it. And because we do get donations for it and it is something that the police department started. Many years ago, I think when Chief Wrighty was here, so. Kids get excited for it, I'd like to keep it going, but I will be reaching out to the fire department to kind of guide me through that since they've been involved.
Seems like it's always a decent term.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, depending on the weather.
Happy weather.
Yeah.
Only had canceled once or twice the whole time, so. Pretty cool.
So, yeah. Any questions or comments or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, come on up.
Oh, wait, we have sort of committed there, oh.
Yep.
Do you have dates in mind, maybe? The police committee?
Soon. I'll come up with something and send an email. Because I know we have our budget meeting May. Ninth. We're going to have a budget meeting, yes, next couple weeks. Send you guys an email or a text.
Evening. We're up there, so uh, D N R report is done, that's uh, sending the usage to the D N R to get. Dirt for the water usage and then the water conservation report. Go through all the different usage sent out to into through the system. Got numbers back from uh Diane to going here with. Numbers are. Real close to what we said, no.
There was no major leaks on the lawn anyway?
No, um, on there, we just had a little uh service leak. This last week. Um, but that wasn't on this report, that'll be next year's report.
Those are within one percent or less than one percent?
They had probably fifteen thousand gallons a day they were losing.
No, but I mean, the overall server when you compared what's being pumped and what's being.
It was five percent.
And how many gallons?
Um, thirty nine. Total gallons. And also, and I have that report on E S P, so I can make a print off of it too, so that'll be available also.
Is that what it normally runs, five percent?
That's what it's been running, it's that five to ten percent. I mean, we we tried making sure when we flush hydrants to. Figure out how much is being flushed. We don't have the every hydrant, we don't put the, put the meter on.
Okay.
To say how many gallons is being pumped out of each hydrant.
Is time it. So you're only.
Do you suspect any other leaks or is this just kind of a one off?
That was just that one off. I mean, we have hy- um, hydrants that are still running right now. So we'll get more down to depth once we turn off them hydrants and then we can. We see the numbers really again. Um. The drinking water evolving fund final inspection report. Is uh. There. Uh, you want me to read the whole part starting from?
Well, I just give us the highlights.
Fourteenth. But uh, they came and did the whole inspection, so it switched to a hundred thousand gallon, single pedestal, spearoid. From the seventy five thousand gallon tank. And uh. Signed off on it, everything's. Been good. So the final part on there. Been operating good, I mean, that mixer in there is. Beneficial big time, we don't have the stagnant water in there, it's stirring all the chemicals up in the tower. So it's just the other aspect of checking yes and signing with official signature.
I love this document there.
That and age.
Is that a one and done, you'll never do that again as far as coming into state to. Inform this.
I can't miss it, this is the one report that they go and.
Go down and down and come back again.
No, well, they come back to do their annual inspections. Through the walk around, the water plant and stuff, the Department of Health does them, but this is the one inspection that. Through a. Um, secondary means. Because they got drinking water evolving fund and then Department of Health, they both coincide with each other, so you got. Two people that actually show and do the inspection. Partly like that's the detention tank was cleared out with all settlements. Um, got most of them out of there, I mean, we still have. A few that linger in there with the pumps and stuff. That's the detention tank behind the filter, so those water goes through that area settles. And then gets sent to the. To the filter. I do have the quotes for the shop floors.
What about the automatic generator?
Oh, yeah, that one, um, so I did talk to the. Scheduling lady at Cummins. And uh, went over the different issues about the V F defaults. Well, she said that technicians need to be able to be onsite to be able to test, test that out, work out the bugs. So when they're coming to do the actual maintenance inspection for the generator. I can discuss that, them issues with them.
You've got scheduled all the years.
They haven't scheduled it.
Do you need Burke films here too to be onsite at that time too?
No, it it would just, it's just through Cummins, so either they put a relay in there where it would um ramp down the B F Ds. As, because most time it's not ramping down the B F Ds long enough, so they'll have a relay that'll, it'll. Bring the B F Ds down further and then kick power off. And then it would kick it, kick in the generator after five minutes of sit. Because right now, it's just all of a sudden, the power's been kicking off, even if B F Ds are running and that's what's been tripping.
So. More summer storm season.
Yeah, it'll be more them working them out when they get here. Through it. So I'll have more of a report when you get here and do it. So do have a action request form, have two quotes. So I can read there. So shop floor is experienced noticeable, noticeable sinking, creating a hazardous working environment. Issue poses significant safety risks to personnel, equipment and operations. M M U A found issues during their annual safety inspection. There's two estimates to demo remove and replace shop floor and apron. Um, both I, both of them are identical.
More footage adds up?
Yes.
Paige, when they, it didn't get able to start on the one?
Once the weather's permitting and they get in the schedule, they didn't, they didn't give me a complete.
Top of their list, they say?
They never said that. But the quarter, I mean, you're getting on their scheduling.
Usually, usually them guys are scheduled from last year for this year. So it's. No guarantee we tie it right away by anybody. Only to accept the bid for six thousand two hundred eighteen dollars from Schmitz Concrete. Second.
Second.
Room, any words, second? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll post them time. But the pitch five zero, Schmitz Concrete.
I do have a street sign discussions on there. We have some faded faded bent street signs, right now there's eight of them on my list. Um. There's the hardware and the signs themselves who come to about one thousand sixty. Fifteen hundred dollars. For them, street signs.
These street name signs, are these stop signs, are these?
Street name signs.
Okay.
Been going around looking at stop signs, stop signs are, have been gradually, we still have some on hand, so if they do get bad or faded, we do have them on hand to replace. This is more the street signs with.
Annual thing, you do this every spring?
To go through and look at them, yes.
We have money already in the budget for it.
We do, it would be coming out of the street and road repair budget. So I did, I did calculate that in there from on that budget. So just kind of getting any pen stresses. Of to go ahead and order them. Then do have dates in there for the committee meeting, April seventeenth at zero nine.
They're not available on the seventeenth.
Or April twenty-fourth.
They're not available on the twenty-fourth.
Then the street sweeper's in the shop, getting ready for the spring sweeping.
You start that, I'm just gonna wait the weather starts warming up.
Now, once we get done with the snow. Um, I was looking at, hopefully either, well, maybe Monday next week. Trying to get out there to get the sand before it all washes, we get big rainfalls that sand will wash down it to everything else, so. Monday's the deadline to looking at the starting.
And Heather. Welcome.
Uh, so, yeah, so far this, we've been kind of on track, but last year March is looking to be about the same. Urho was down, actually nine hundred dollars, the majority of it wasn't off sale. The ref, I contacted them last week, they said, well, they're depending two to three weeks, they'll contact you and they have a day for sure.
That's good news.
Yeah, I'm excited. Um, T H C sales, we've been doing it for about what, twelve days now, and we've made about two seventy-five, which is about thirty-seven percent of what we've spent on it, so I think that keeps up, we'll make pretty good out in the end with it. And I don't really have much more other than committee meeting, do you guys have anything? Um, I know you like Fridays, um, I can do the eleventh, eighteenth or the twenty-fifth, any Friday after three. Problem, until we get somebody else hired.
Are there any needs that you're gonna be presenting to the council, it's a project?
Actually, I don't think so, it'll probably be just touching up on what we kind of went through when we were away.
You touch on midsummer, is that great as well?
On midsummer, alright.
During the meeting, just kind of give us an overview of what's going on, what's planned.
I think as long as we're on that topic, I looked at, you booked a band. Two thousand bucks, thousand dollar deposit, but some of the verbies said if the or the music is canceled, they still get paid.
Well, last year it was kind of a, me and the band kind of fought a little outside, because they're like, it's gonna rain, I'm like, it's not gonna rain this year. It usually doesn't rain till the end of the night anyway.
I don't know, Judy, I'm pretty much wide open, I think it's three o'clock Friday afternoons.
You can get along with eighteenth, twenty-fourth.
Is that, okay.
If I'm gonna be walking around, we could probably just do it.
Do we want to convene here and then move or just start there?
Okay.
That's where everything's gonna be, so. Anybody got any questions, brother? Thanks, Heather.
Have a good one.
Uh, uh, fire departments.
Welcome, evening, everyone. Got a small list from Terry, not much, she's sitting in Hawaii right now, so. I don't know if he had talked, but he's looking at replacing some lights on our main engine. I don't know, I think there's what, four out in the front and four out in the back. So in order to re, in order to change those out, we have to do the light bar also, I understand.
All LEDs.
All LEDs.
And it has to get a resist, a resistor there, they're all strobes now, so.
They don't make the strobes anymore.
If you're gonna do that, you must.
It's about uh, four grand, thirty-nine hundred and eighteen thirty-six was the estimate. He said it might run a little bit over that, the time he gets, all the little, parts he needs with it.
It sounds like you guys are gonna work on that yourselves.
Yeah, we can spell it all ourselves. Which truck is it on? Our man, forty-eight fifty-five. We kind of find a used light bar. Wadena County had one from nineteen ninety-two, little old. And then the guy that we're going through for this, he had like a four footer, but it was old. But yeah, just for that light bar, it's twenty-six hundred bucks.
Just LEDs are just the way the future.
I know, I know.
Okay.
That's something that'll probably take place, I don't know if we need anything on it, I don't. We can just order. Yeah, I would assume, yeah. What else, we had one call. Month of March. Something else we need to start thinking about, um, turn up years of replacement in twenty twenty-six. Um, I think our plan is end of summer. Hopefully we'll have some leads on a good grant writer. And we can start submitting our FEMA grants in November. And then in the spring, they award, we kind of have a, an idea if we're getting it or not.
What do they normally cost?
Being a quarter million dollars. Had to tell for everybody on the department. Twenty-four guys. Twenty-four guys.
That's something Sourcewell could help sell with two on the grant.
On the grant writing, I believe so.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, I would, I asked Dave on Sourcewell, he didn't think they would help on that. We had a private person write our last FEMA grant out of Alexandria. I don't know if he still does it.
And they would at least point us in the right direction, so uh, definitely, you guys follow up with me, let's make sure we start this sooner than later.
Yeah, cause we'll have to get complete quotes and ask, let's just say that, it's not fun, I did it once. So that would be something I would just have to keep in the back of our mind, if we don't get it. What's our contingency? Cause I think the FEMA grant, we kick in five or fifteen percent of the total. If we are, if rewarded.
With your tenure.
Yeah.
Ten years on the year.
Ten year.
Did they ever give waivers, that for some reason the funding isn't there, like give you an extra year?
I guess they've never had that, well, with that, yeah. And did you guys discuss the committee meeting with Terry or Bates or, I don't even know, is on the fire committee? Or when he's coming back, I don't even know.
Well, it'd be nice to get, we need to get an idea what your needs are, what you're looking for.
I'll find out when he's coming back.
Or do some.
Sometime this month or next month, I mean.
And just uh, keep me in the loop.
I'll just have him start with you.
Terry's gonna be back next week.
Is he? Okay.
Unless it looks at the weather and say.
True. Then the only other thing you'd like to mention is he's wondering if there's any chance of removing some fence posts.
No. No chance.
It's just tight.
I wondered, I wondered about that one, they got put up, I was thinking about you guys with the, bringing the trucks in and those, they get pretty difficult to get in, you know.
Not, it's, it's tight and we have a lot of guys that come with tremblers and that's where they park. And I mean, we had that car fire the other day and we pretty much blocked whoever was out here parked, so we blocked them all in. But that's, I don't understand the purpose of that.
It's just tight.
Tight.
Will they put in because people driving here and whatnot or something?
I think they were coming from the.
Yeah, they were destroying the drainage ditch.
Coming from the recycling bins.
I wonder if, I guess, I wonder if we just took it out on this side. At least, that would give you guys the extra thirty feet.
Actually, but on the recycle side, yeah.
Maybe we can have Ron or.
Well, I, I, I worked on this with, with Brian, uh, golly, probably about six months ago, and yeah, the main issue was, is people were just tearing it up. And uh, erosion just swept it all out of there, uh, and, you know, it, it's just not, it's just not good to have that, so uh, let me get with Brian and we can, we can link up like tomorrow, we were kind of figuring out a little bit better solution to accommodate fire. I mean, as long, I think, I think, yeah, if we can keep the, the far side uh, blocked off and kind of prevent traffic, yeah, I think we'll, it'll be all right.
No, cause the problem wasn't on this end, it was on that end. Yeah, they would, while they would come through the side.
Cut in there and then follow across.
And, and we would have people just drive through it wholesale, so we just want to prevent that.
That's all I had.
Did we lost to looking, you got twenty-four of them?
Yeah, twenty-three white guys through going through the. Well, through the vetting. And that'll be twenty-four of them.
It's twenty-four, the magic number, is that capped? And is that based on like, how big the town is or?
No, it's just an internal number we kind of set.
Can't get everybody to show up on a volunteer basis, you know, they might not be here, so you need a good pool to pull from. And old concrete plant empties out every time it goes off. Alrighty, anybody else got anything for Jim? Well, thanks for shaking up Jim.
Thanks for that.
You're welcome, thanks for telling.
Let me see the one.
And Brian, welcome.
Does everybody do it tonight? So it's your out there, that's all like a reasonable plan?
That would work, you know, as long as we have one side or the other, the reason, the only reason I did both sides was just to keep it, and you know, if it's there, I'll just take what's, we have on this side, that rope and I'll just go lower. And make it look like a, an actual fence. Yep, it'll work. Alright, well. We're getting snow this week and.
One administrative note, Brian, uh, the Parks and Rec report, it's behind the budget year date, I apologize for that. Yes, sir. You were saying there's gonna be snow again?
Yeah, yeah, I might have jumped gun with my first sentence there, but uh, yeah, we're gonna be getting more snow here this week. But I was hoping to get out to the park this week and start cleaning up branches and everything like that, and just getting it all cleaned up before we open, but now we're gonna look at probably next week doing that stuff. Um, as you can see, I got a few things wrote down here that I need to work with. Ron and I are gonna be working on right away raising the road over by sixteen and eighteen and seventeen and fifteen, because it's a flood zone. We want to get the road up higher and the pads up higher for where people park, so that if they're out there and we get some storm, they're not new and out of their campers to get the facilities or something. So we're gonna be working on that, I if I'm gonna pack that sand down, I'd like to be able to rent a roller for a packer, but I don't know if anybody around here has one, and it'd probably be pretty expensive to get one hauled here. To use.
Uh, there's gotta be something in within our park rapids.
Well, you can rent them for like a Bobcat, or it's a small little drum that vibrates.
Okay.
So we've got a Bobcat that might accommodate one, they're not that big, but they definitely pack.
You got it filled with water?
No.
They're already.
They're heavy.
Yeah.
Good, good, that might, that might be beneficial.
Our rental park rabbits might have one.
I'll contact them and see what they have, but it would be really nice to be able to pack those pads and those roads down. And then I want to get in there and start uh, measuring out and painting the trees and everything that we need to remove for the new sites on both the primitives and the permanents. And uh, I'm kind of anxious to get up there, just start going, but I'm just jumping out a bit here. Um, just waiting and doing things around shop and stuff, we're running, just making sure the city's running right. Uh, let's see here.
Hey, touch on the burn pile?
Yeah, the burn piles down, yep. Well, we, last weekend when I was out there, I took a video, someone went out there and dumped a bunch of actual garbage out there. Behind the compost pile, they were trying to hide it, and I, I think it stole a bunch of food out of the dumpster at Senex is what it was, because there was a bunch of sandwiches and pizzas and none of it was eaten.
Wow.
So they just, I don't know if they're trying to feed the wildlife, the turkeys or what, but you know, they could have just thrown the food and not the garbage. But yeah, I spent about twenty, thirty minutes out there cleaning all that, but I got most of it. Um, trying to keep the burn pile area nice and smooth, but that's not working out, we get the kids going out there having fun. And now it's even more dangerous, they go out there and do it, because a lot of the old burn pile logs and stuff are stuck in the dirt. I've been trying to scoot them out of there, I just don't want to see anybody go out there and get hurt, so I was wondering if you know, we should implement like a seven A M to four P M. Five days a week out there, and I know it's a, it'd be a problem for weekenders, because they do all their yard work and everything on the weekend, because they're working all week, I don't know how that would work out.
Remember, we, we used to lock it, I remember with them, it was usually.
Police used to go and lock it.
Yeah, I talked with, check with Amy, she probably remember, or Derek probably remembers with them, we used to lock it.
You know, if you make it a night shift, you know, we get locked, and weekends they could do it too, cause that is the problem, you're gonna want access to it on weekends.
Right.
Even, and even, you know, after the four o'clock, people come home from work and they just, you know, work also.
Yeah, and whichever one of us is on call on the weekends, we can unlock it in the morning. You know, right away when we get there, so people can start rolling out there.
Yeah, you get on the weekends, on like, trimming trees and brush.
Exactly, and then everybody pretty much tries to do all their yard work on the weekend.
We don't have any old game cams that have been confiscated around here.
Well, I know we had one out uh, at the park. Is it still out there or can we repurpose it?
It's at the cemetery right now, because we were having vandalism happen out there last year, hopefully we'll get that one.
I, we could try the locking it up at a certain time at night. See if that helps with some of this, and if not, maybe we would have to do some cameras.
Uh, and I was thinking also, and I, I, you know, we could post hours that it's open on the weekend, just, we could have it just open on Sunday. For example, I, I don't know if limiting it is a great idea though, uh, just a suggestion.
Now, the easiest way to do that would be have, of course, be able to lock and unlock it. So that these guys don't have to come in special for it. If you want to have it accessible to the residents of the city though, for their needs.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. I mean, well, weekdays we'd always have it open, I mean, you know, Monday through Friday, and then like I said, when we're on call on the weekend, we can open it mornings. It's usually we're, we're here at seven A M. And I, I am, but I mean. But yeah, we can have that open every weekend in the mornings. No problem.
Now, if the, if the issues continue, those people tearing it up, dumping the wrong stuff out there, it would be well worth it to. Buy some reasonably priced, priced game cams. I find that when people know they're on camera, they behave a lot better.
Isn't that odd? But that, that works for me, getting that stuff out there. Uh, other than that. You know, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, I wanted to reinstall this week, the RV water stations, but you want to wait to do that till after the snow's completely done.
Is it on your radar screen to deal with the, uh. Erosive blocks on the building from salt damage and on the pillars at the base?
Yeah, I've been, I've been talking with Ralph a little bit about that. And then, uh, we're going to work on that here this spring and get that stuff done. You know, probably try to get some kind of spray we can spray on them and try to protect them a little more to.
You know, some kind of sealing to protect them against the.
Exactly. And then all winter long, we've been staying far enough away from the building when we throw our salts in. It gets up close, we're not getting it on there. We weren't trying to get it on there in the first place, but it's just a matter of. Time has been eating away at it. Once that salt gets on there, it's. You gotta power wash it off.
I just like coming on what you're saying about the, I've just been listening and thinking here. Um, let's make sure that I'm talking about the, the compost pile and. People putting trash and. Um, definitely has to be regulated. I think that's what the dialogue is about. How do we best regulate it? But. Uh. I think it's important that we, we don't. Over regulate it to where we punish. The law-abiding citizens that are trying to, right?
Absolutely.
So whether that's even like a. Like a ten o'clock, you know, I mean, it's. Some people, they're, they want to grind, 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 grind because on Saturday they get it done and buttoned up. And by the time they're. Uh, because they're out of town Sunday, you know what I mean? Or whatever it is and. Uh, nothing good's probably happening after that point anyways. It's dark, but if it's, if it's June, July, um. People are still working and doing their stuff at nine o'clock at night.
Yep.
So, and that, and that can kind of change as the seasons potentially, whoever's on that. That night duty, you know, whether it's law enforcement, they can kind of close it whenever it need be. But, um, I just. Listening to all the comments, which is great dialogue. I just want to make sure we don't over regulate that and you end up handing off in. People that are just trying to get something done at night.
Well, they, they've always found a way in. I mean, I know, right? But I mean, Ron and Gary both have told me that they go down the darn old railroad.
Oh, right.
Yeah. And then that way.
Railroad truck was trail surfing.
Yep.
That's where the cameras might end up being.
Yeah, that's good. Good to hear what you're bringing on that.
And then will you be at that public works meeting then too? So we can cover some of the park stuff too while we're here. While we're in committee. Move some of that stuff forward.
All right.
I'm still here on that, uh, P L M, that. Lead mitigation that we're going to be doing on the beach. Have you heard anything back from PLM yet?
I have not.
Because their deadline for application is April fifteenth. Meeting, you should probably call them and see what the status is on that permit and.
They're running far away.
What's that?
It's not far away.
No, it's not.
Anything else?
No, it's good.
All right. Thanks guys.
Thanks, Brian.
Hey, uh, good evening, council. Uh, first thing you'll have is the, uh, budget year to date, regular expenses, um. You'll see a few things in there that, uh, might look off and, uh, they were definitely coded wrong. Uh, this has since been corrected. Where. Uh, a legal bill was put in a place where it wasn't supposed to. So, uh. The next one of these you'll have April four, I think, uh, it'll be a lot cleaner. Uh, as well as, you know, we, we found a, uh. An item that was. Voted for expended in twenty-four, but then it was placed in twenty-five. So we're still trying to. Uh, get that corrected.
You done with that? Move on.
Um, right. Uh, so, uh, in the interest of continuing to, uh, provide transparency and, uh, you know. Keep up with our house cleaning here. Um. We need to, uh, clarify, the former deputy clerk was given a raise. Uh. This individual is no longer with the city, but we still need to, for our records, uh. Codify it. And the previous deputy clerk was given a raise. Following successful evaluation from step two six, previous union scale. While the council was informed, it was never codified in the motion. In relation to previous house cleaning, the city council wishes to be as transparent as possible. And the motion is to formally approve the raise previously given to the deputy clerk, ensuring proper documentation and transparency in accordance with city procedures.
Just a quick question. So you said you did a successful evaluation, uh. Was that after she was employed for six months?
Uh, it was five months. Yeah.
Five months. Okay. And that's entered file?
It is.
What was, what was, what was the raft of nail to jump at? Four steps in one sitting.
Uh, the rationale was, uh, the position was, um, successfully pulled out of the union. Uh, through a process I went through with the Bureau of Mediation Services. And, uh, it was my judgment that. Um, and I'll admit was wrong. Should have came to the city council first. Uh, but it was my judgment that this individual needed to be compensated greater than what she was. At the time. Obviously we're not making that mistake again.
Plus you learned, yeah?
Very much so.
All right, can we get a motion to that effect? Normally approve the raise previously given to the deputy clerk, ensuring proper documentation and transparency in accordance with city procedures.
So.
Please, second.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Question thirty five zero.
Uh, next gentleman is the, uh, Minnesota Rural Water Association membership, um. One of the things that Rural Water does for the city is, uh, one of, one of the best examples we can give is, uh, we had a rate study done. Uh, when was it run?
September, October?
Yes, and that was done, uh, at no cost to the city, uh, as being part of the membership.
Often such a study completed. What frequency?
How often are they done, Ron?
The rate studies?
Yeah.
Um.
Every few years?
Every few years, but. Rural, they, they provide whether we have a hydrant. Messed up. Training. They provide, they'll, they'll provide, they provide the free training. I mean, if we need different parts. Different, um. Aspects to run through them, they provide that type of service towards the city. There, there are different entities that Rural Water. Will provide for the city. That it, it is a good membership for us to have.
And you'll see on the membership form, uh, we have, uh, five hundred and eighty-four connections and, uh, the price is going to be five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents. Um, so the, uh, action memo, continuing our membership in. The Minnesota Rural Water Association ensures the city has access to valuable resources, training, technical assistance and advocacy to support the efficient, sustainable management. Of our water and wastewater systems. And the motion to that effect is. To approve the continuation of the city's membership in the Rural Water Association. For five hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty cents to ensure ongoing access to resources, training, technical assistance and advocacy. For the effective management of the city's water and wastewater systems.
That city.
So.
Annual, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Oh, you'd be okay after you did.
So I'll, I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
You just do it. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the council was, uh, given a copy of Chief Lane's evaluation report. And, uh, I had a very good, uh, sit down and conversation with her, um. And, uh, I will, without further ado, uh, I'll just read the background here and move to the motion. Uh, the city of Minnoga wishes to recognize and commend Police Chief Amy Lane for her exceptional leadership. On wavering dedication, outstanding commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Through her consistent professionalism, sound judgment and tireless efforts, Chief Lane is exempt aside the highest standards of public service. Her successful evaluation is a testament to her dedication and positive impact she has on our city. As a reflection of our gratitude and recognition of her invaluable contributions. Is both fitting and deserving to advance her compensation to reflect her exemplary performance. Motion is to approve the advancement of Police Chief Amy Lane from step fourteen to step fifteen. On the city of Minnoga pay scale in recognition of her successful evaluation and outstanding service to the community.
When does that go into effect?
Uh. Leave her evaluation in the middle of February. I have to get the exact date. I don't know it off the top of my head, but it was in February.
That order her date of hire? That's what it was, Bill Biden.
Yes.
They were really.
Don't hurry.
We watching it like April, we hires her?
Uh, it's February. I would have to look. I have it written down.
I can't remember.
Her eval date.
Was, it seemed to me that, that it would become effective on, on date of hire.
Yes.
After the motion of effective date of hiring. Uh. Anniversary date. Watch me on that truck.
So move.
Please, second. All those favors are aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Right, uh, next is a, uh, resolution and I'm sure there'll be some discussions. Uh, resolution expressing the city's intent to consider the transfer of Buzz and Pines Tax Increment Financing District upon payment of outstanding taxes. Uh, and mayor, do you want me to read it first and then discuss, or do you want to discuss first?
Oh, we'll discuss first, see if there's any changes to it before we. Read through the whole thing.
Yeah, I did have some questions related to this and. I guess I'm a little surprised we'd be making a resolution. While this, uh, issue is being supposedly negotiated between legal councils. Is that, is that ongoing right now? I'm not aware of all this process and we can play it out with it.
Uh, it is ongoing and, um. The latest information that I have is that there is a settlement agreement in the works.
Drafted this resolution.
I drafted it.
By what qualification, education or experience makes you qualified? To draft a resolution of this nature dealing with this topic?
I, I just searched the best way to draft a resolution that doesn't bind the city in any particular manner.
What educational experience do you possess or qualifies you to draft this kind of a document?
I, I don't have the, um. The educational background to, uh, you know, make a. Awful, uh, anything, uh, but I can't.
Was this reviewed by legal counsel to make sure it was legit?
No, it was not reviewed by.
Has it been passed through elders and associates for their review?
No, they're not our attorney representing us for this case. Are they, are they our TIF attorney for this case either?
They were involved in the TIF issuance. Uh. I gotta tell you, until there, there are. There are dynamics that come into play. I'll be honest with you. I hold an MBA. I have almost fifty years in commercial banking experience. I dealt with tips. I do not have the qualification or the experience. To draft a document like this, nor would I enter into it without passing it in front of. Our attorney.
Exactly. I'd say the intentions weren't well founded, but. This, when you start talking legality of a TIF, uh, they're fairly complex. And I think, uh, before we, you know, at, at some point there's going to be a resolution. But the resolution should be crafted by our legal counsel when the settlement is in place.
And we should be guided by our, I mean, I was surprised I had not seen. In an email from. Uh, the clerk. To the council members from the attorney dealing with this, that we're operating in the blind. Without, without an attorney's input. And I think that that is. Not the prudent action to take. All right. So to be clear here, which one of our five lawyers would you like to draft this resolution so that we don't get the wrong one? And have to do this again and again and again.
Well, we do have a TIF attorney, don't we?
We have a TIF attorney.
That'd be the one to do it then.
That's not who's working on this.
Well, so our, our TIF attorney has already sent me all the documents. To transfer the tip. However, before that happens. The lawsuit has to be settled first and then it's a domino effect. And the intent of this resolution is just a show of good faith that the city is willing to move on this. Expeditiously. When that settlement happens.
And that well may be. But I still think it's imperative. That the city use prudence. And I would, I, to you, to your question, Jody, I would say two attorneys should look at it. Our litigation attorney and the TIF attorney. Because you're dealing with two. Interrelated issues. Now, you know, somebody, well, somebody who's been working on this behind the scenes and may have some information, if I may, I'd like to ask. Diane, do you have any insight you can share?
I don't know anything about your resolutions. I just know, you know. The contract that we have. I'm, I've not spoken with our TIF attorney. Um. I'm not involved with. Any of the TIF stuff. I'm mostly in the waterworks. Um. I had researched the TIF information because we were trying to figure out what you had to do to have it transferred. And so I've been digging. Um. And when I was at training, there were some things that I had learned down there. So I am learning about the. TIF stuff, but I know nothing about, you know, resolutions or anything like that.
Well, and these issues, they're, they're two separate issues. I don't think we need to have two attorneys look at. Everything because one of them is a TIF transfer. That is a standalone. And. The lawsuit against the city is another standalone. And what our attorney, our LMC attorney for this case advised us. Is to hold off on the TIF transfer until there's a settlement.
Which is exactly. Well, I, if I may have. Again, I, I am not an attorney. Thank God. Uh. But based on. Experience I have had with TIFs in the past in my working career. Where certain actions and certain certifications are not received. By. The organization, i.e. the city. That in that instance. There could be, there could be claim. Against the city. Or the, the underlying taxing entity, you're going to have the county, you're going to have the school, you're going to have the city and so forth. That because the terms of the TIF were not followed. That there is a potential for them. Who may claim back against the city for. Those. Dollars. Did you read number three on this? Yes, I did. That covers everything you just talked about. And. Again, I'm just saying. Prudence, I think, tells us.
Quick question in regards to this one. Is. There's two parts. Let me get it out. For one. The opposition to this document. As I'm listening to the dialogue, is it A, because there is something wrong with this document? Or is it B? Just a principal fact. That maybe certain Ts weren't crossed and Is weren't dotted. I'm just wondering what we're dialoguing. that maybe certain Ts weren't crossed and Is weren't dotted? I'm just wondering what we're dialoguing over. Like falsified information, like a, a document that wouldn't hold weight in, in court if need be, or just principle matter? Both are relevant, both are worthy. I'm just wondering. Reading this, I'm just wondering, is the dialogue because something's wrong, or are we just trying to, hey, next time, let's do this different?
I'm saying I, I think that there are circumstances that exist that could be problematic for the city in the future.
You're just.
If certain things, I'm not talking about the specific doc, I'm talking about underlying issues.
So then if that's the case, I think.
Underlying issues, and that's why I'm saying.
Can be held off.
I think we're better to hold off to exercise prudence and have, have the issue looked at by our TIF attorney and by our litigation attorney. And if they, if they say, fine, go ahead, then fine. We're not out anything, but at least we're protecting the city. And that's, that's my concern is that we're taking steps in a, in a prudent manner that will.
That's where the intent, where the intent.
The city.
I was just wondering if I was missing something, if there was something wrong with the document that you did.
I, I think it's underlying issues you're not seeing.
Okay.
No, I hear.
And, and just for, uh, one part of clarification, our, our TIF attorney has already sent me the documents to transfer the TIF in total.
Well, just keep in mind, too, that until that settlement is agreed to by both parties.
Correct.
So why don't we just wait until everything's settled? And I think the intent is there. We want to get this resolved for the developer. But in the same breath, we want to make sure that we're doing it in a prudent way that makes sure at the end of the day that we're not putting anybody in jeopardy, the city, the school district, or the Whittington County taxpayers.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, nobody is saying we're not going to transfer the tip.
No, I think.
We want all the proper documentation. Ts crossed, Is dotted. Which kind is what number three said here, the administrative review with legal counsel.
Yes.
That all conditions are satisfied, so.
Exactly.
So we're.
Yeah, I mean, on a later date, I wouldn't have any problem endorsing or su- supporting a resolution transferring it over.
So nobody has any objection to the TIF transfer, and you just want all your documentation prior. We make sure that all of the underlying issues have been properly addressed.
You think this is like maybe premature?
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
That helps me understand what we're.
Well, I think that's why it was written up the way it was, that we're not agreeing to transfer. We were, we were agreeing on terms of it, but. I would, I would like to offer a motion to defer this. Solution.
I would second that.
So you want to? And so.
So all remedies are satisfied related to both parties being in agreement. Which I think we'll, we'll get there, I'm sure.
It's not for both. I believe.
Uh, I have a motion by, uh, Councilmember Netland, seconded by Councilwoman Tom Perry.
Tom Perry.
Tom Perry.
Sorry.
Look at my last name, okay?
I still don't know how to say it.
Okay. Right?
Yeah. So the motion is to defer until all.
Remedies.
Satisfied?
Are satisfied. Yeah, it sounds boring.
By both parties. Good.
Perfect.
Mike made the motion during, I'm seconding the motion. Or the other way around?
I made it during.
Any more discussion?
Will you allow to have public commentary at all at this stage? Is that allowed or?
No.
Um.
It's not, Dan.
You got it?
Yes, sir.
There, well, we don't, we don't have public on this, but he has an interesting part of this.
Uh, if we can complete the motion, I think we could.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We're deferring it, and now Kyle.
Well, I guess my question is because I got my tax statement showing the special assessment on my tax statement. How, if this thing is still in debate, how do I have a special assessment on my taxes?
Right, and you're, and that's for the May. So we would have to get this cleared up by then for TIF to to transfer this.
Diane's got her hand up.
The, that assessment on your water, on your taxes, has nothing to do with the TIF?
I know, but they, they won't extend the TIF until the water bill issue is resolved, correct? You guys, you guys won't transfer the TIF? And that's what you guys just voted on, correct? You're delaying the transfer of a TIF until the resolution or the, I don't know what the right word I'm looking for is, but both parties agree on this with the settlement. There we go. Right? So if that dollar amount hasn't been settled, how is it on my tax bill now, a dollar amount?
Well, one, I don't have an answer for you on that.
Okay.
Uh, what I can say is, is once our, our legal has given us a settlement agreement, that's the catalyst for the TIF transfer. Now, as far as what's on your taxes.
Yeah.
I, I don't think the city is too particularly concerned about it because it has nothing to do with our case. These are your taxes, not our case. Now, I, I could be wrong about that. But that is my.
But the TIF would change that.
Yes, yes.
So we have our regular reading is on the tenth.
Fourteenth.
Oh, it was fourteenth. So that would be, if we can get this squared up by them, that would give me plenty of time. The documents would be in place where it could be changed. That would be. So we could get that cleared up, if we can get this. I'd like, I wish this was cleared up. I'm so tired of old business. I really want to get this done.
Well, you want to make sure you're doing it right.
I know, I know. We want to do it right. But we also don't want to drag our feet too far, so I would encourage, highly encourage that we get this done before the fourth beat. Get everything taken care of. Um, it's my feeling from the consensus I've received here that we have no problem with the TIF going forward. Just want all our Ts crossed and Is dotted. All the documentation. Is that correct?
Has the state auditor been notified of this, uh, this, uh, issue?
Who?
State auditor's office.
I don't think they have. I don't know what they would have to do with it.
Oh, they oversee TIF, uh, districts.
That's why I say you got these underlying issues. You just can't. If our, if our TIF lawyer is saying that he has no issue with it being transferred once these things are done.
I haven't seen that documentation. Have you?
I, I have the document.
Don't say that you can share with us?
I can share that, Council, absolutely.
I would want to see an, a, a, a letter to the council from both our litigation and the TIF attorney saying God be with you. Go ahead and do it. That's fine. And, and then let's be clear on this resolution that you want. Who do we want to prepare the resolution? If it's not the city clerk's job, whose job is it to prepare the resolution? Well, I think on that kind of a document, it's, it's okay that he prepares it, but have it vetted by long term.
For, for the, you know, for the actual settlement, I, my hands are completely off of this. This would be our LMC, uh, attorney that would give us the settlement document. And then for the TIF transfer, that would come from our TIF attorney. Uh, my hands are not on any of that.
And for any resolutions affiliated with this, to at least have you want to have your fingers on the keyboard, that's fine, but have the attorney vet it.
There, there's no, there, there's going to be no resolutions from me in regards to the case settlement and the TIF transfer.
It just strictly comes from the TIF lawyer.
Correct.
Saying transfer the TIF.
Correct. And again, I'll provide that to the council for your purview.
Okay.
Uh, Hire Click Renewal, uh, Council, if you're, uh.
Yeah, what is this?
Right, so Hire Click basically is a, uh, online program that we post our job description to. And then it puts it on Indeed, it puts it on ZipRecruiter, uh, I think it puts it on Monster. There's, there's a couple of big names where it advertises our, our positions. Um, so, uh, I'm definitely getting a lot of interest in the lifeguards, and we might even have a, uh, swim instructor that might come up and, um, so I'd like to get these, uh, these job descriptions out there. Our membership went out on March twenty-seventh uh, for Hire Click. And if we were to have put them on Hire Click prior to the twenty-seventh, they would have just came off. And I didn't think that would be very professional or look good for the city if we had it up there for only, let's say, five days, and we wanted it up there for twelve days, and, and it just suddenly disappeared. Uh, I, I didn't think that'd be good for business.
So this is a, this is a, a new service?
No, this is, the service has been here. We used it, uh, for the deputy clerk position. Uh, they, you used it for my position, um, both deputy clerks.
Enjoy?
Yes, yes.
So if it's already in, if it's already in play and it's already been budgeted, budgeted or.
It's just for a new year.
It's just renewal, so.
Just renewal.
Especially if we're already using it.
A good return on investment.
And we'd be using it heavily.
Now, I don't know what he's adding.
Yes, yes.
All of our entities.
Oh, all of our entities, like the nursing home.
That's a good question. Does this?
Liquor store, do all of our entities, one license?
Yes.
Also, yeah. City of Monaga.
So we're in with Greenwood connections.
I, I can't confirm. I, I, I understand that Laura might use it, but I don't know if we're on the same account. I haven't seen her, uh, descriptions on our account. So they might have, so they might pay their own, that comes out of another budget, I don't know.
I, I wouldn't be able to talk. She did, it would be out of hers. This is already, this is our, we're already using it. It's just a renewal. It's already been budgeted for.
But if we, if we could share the service with Greenwood, we could cost share the expense. I think it's worth checking into.
I want you to follow up with them to see if they're going to piggyback together.
Well, and then I was just wondering, too, of all of our entities, like I had mentioned, like, for instance, the liquor store.
It's all part of that.
This, so they would only, they would be the only ones that have, maybe have their own account? Laura? Uh, yeah, I, I apologize, Council. I didn't think of this earlier, but, you know, time's kind of a factor.
Okay, yeah. We have the motion, we have the second to renew.
I say renew.
If.
Yeah, just then move forward, then explore it and see if there's a.
Biggest, more of all tomorrow, you can explore it with Hire Click. I mean, if we can do that and cost share, we just cut our costs.
Yeah.
So we have the motion, we have the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Make the courage for the zero, but we'll follow up with Laura.
Sir.
See if we can have one for the whole city to.
Um, bills, uh, invoice copies were sent to the coun- city council for the following batches. Uh, I did take off the reimbursement batch because those checks were included in the checks batch. Um, we're, we're getting our system re, uh, back on track. Uh, batch zero, three, three, one, two, five, pay on the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Batch zero, three, three, one, two, five EFT in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents for a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
This, uh, this probably was already answered by Jody, but the American Legal publication, uh, for uploading our new ordinances. Uh, we were billed for those back and, where the bill was dated in December of last year. But with all their new ordinances that were submitted, is it true they haven't been published yet?
I just looked at our land use and it was not updated. I am talking to them to get that rectified, uh, but.
As we found.
Yes, we did send it.
It's not there. The land use.
Yeah, I was just curious because it was, uh, were the bills from twelve nineteen and twelve eighteen part of that submission of the new ordinances?
It was sent, uh, I can't remember the exact date, but it was definitely sent in twenty-four, and we, we approved this in no.
Well, December, December, land use got approved.
Yes.
So it probably would have gone out of here in January.
No, I would have sent it right away. I, I'll.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll.
December of, of twenty-four.
That's the only question I have.
Another question? Well, as I understand, most of the bills for one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Please, second. Thank you. All in favor say aye. Aye. Same sign. First by zero. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. All right, and the time is seven twenty-four. And Council, thank you very much, and to our viewers, thank you for attending, and we are signing off.
I didn't work, Rod, is the late.